...10C, censuring of Commissioner Bolton. This is brought by Commissioner Villalobos. Please state the reasons for moving forward with the requested action if there is consensus to bring it out back at a future meeting.
Uh, City Attorney, can you please reiterate our conversation for your suggestion to bring this back at the next meeting?
Yeah, uh, I thank you, Commissioner Villalobos, and I, anticipation of tonight's meeting and this item coming forward, um, in conjunction with the clerk, we reviewed the city code, and while the city code certainly provides for a censure to take place, there is no particular procedure or mechanism within the code in which to move forward with a motion to censure. According to, and in our code, when there's an absence of a specific procedure in our rules and regulations governing your meetings, then you look to Roberts' Rules of Order. Roberts' Rules of Order has two provisions on motions to censure. If the action giving rise to the potential move to censure takes place at a regular meeting where everyone is present, then it would be appropriate to make a motion to censure at that point in time. If the actions take place outside of a scheduled meeting that's taking place, then the appropriate thing is to, one, determine that there's consensus and to move it forward. We would then put it on the next agenda for action, and then we would, again, if there's continued interest, we would schedule a hearing, because that is what the Roberts' Rules of Order calls for. Since the actions that give, that appear to have given rise to the, this item being placed on the agenda took place outside of a regular meeting, then, you know, you have to have a hearing, you have to have testimony, you have to have the information, and have the ability to ask questions of the involved parties, what took place, how it took place, and whether or not you believe it rises to the level of being a censurable act. Act, I'm sorry. So, I shared that information with Commissioner Villalobos, I shared that information also with Commissioner Bolton, since he has a similar item on the agenda. So, at this point in time, the, you know, there has been statements by both Commissioners that they believe that this warrants further action. So, the question under our rules is, do we move it forward as an action item, and then to schedule a hearing?
So, we have two items on the agenda, and appreciate this, and I know the floor is yours, so, I'm gonna ask this in general, and I know that I am stepping on your toes, and I know I'm stepping on Commissioner Bolton's toes at this time, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. In light of what we have heard from our residents this evening, can we please put this aside and start just doing the business of the city, stop making things personal, and not have to bring anything forward in a censure for either one or anyone else, and if need be, even though we've brought it up, I believe, two or three times, to strengthen our policies on our behavior, even though, again, I say we shouldn't need rules written to be able to behave? So, again, I'm sorry, Commissioner Villalobos, for stepping on your toes in saying this, and also trying to speak before Commissioner Bolton, but I am asking if there is a way for us to just move it forward without the censure conversation this evening?
I would be okay with that. I just wanna make clear that in our last instance that we had, that I had with Vice Mayor Gallin, Commissioner Placo specifically said, "Family is off the books. We don't talk about our families. One being called stupid and idiot, you can tell me all day long." Other than that, I really don't have a desire to have chaos. I really don't have a desire, this is energy draining, but the disrespect towards our city manager, our staff, our vendors, our city attorney, to one another, and we go into family, I have a problem with that, and that's why I also brought my second item there. So, I'm okay not going through with that. If Commissioner Bolton will be amenable to that, I would be amenable to that as well. If he is not, then I'm gonna push it forward as well.
Thank you. I see that Commissioner Placo wanted to make a comment.
I was gonna ask the attorney, but don't interfere with this, go ahead.
Okay. So, skipping over the item E for discussion and direction by the commission body to enact a more aggressive approach consequence other than censuring, I will now ask Commissioner Bolton for the same thing that I actually asked both of you at the same time. Can we please put this censure matter behind us, and then just work on our code of conduct? Please.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I will respond to you, but with this gesture. Commissioner Villalobos has not made racist comments to me just one time. He has made it several times, and I've spoken to Commissioner Villalobos about racist comments before privately. I've said to him that things that he says about people who look like me is not appropriate. I've had to endure looking at next-door posts from the Commissioner, and he is relentless in his pursuit to tarnish my reputation. I did not know about what was coming tonight but for a resident reaching out to me in his district. What sometimes we see here by one resident or just a few is a smokescreen. I do not believe that residents of this city think that I am crazy or that the commission is crazy. What I will say is this, I did not, absolutely did not, call Commissioner Villalobos's wife fat. I did not do that. What I did do is repeat what Commissioner Villalobos said to me about his wife. And so, if he feels strongly about something that he said about his wife in private, we can go down that road. We can, we can go down the road of censure, because I will state on the record exactly what I said about his wife, and he will have to contend with that truth in his house.
Commissioner.
For, I'm answering your question. He would have to contend with what he said about his wife, and he knows that this is true. He would have to contend with what he said about his wife in his house. I only repeated what he said to me.
Commissioner.
And to say, Madam Mayor, I'm finishing, to say in context, to say in context why I repeated to Commissioner Villalobos what I did that night, is because Commissioner Villalobos called me a black baldy, a bald head.
Commissioner Bolton, the whole purpose of this, no, the whole purpose of this is to not do this.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Villalobos called me a bald head not just once, but in the commission office as well as he's leaving, in front of staff. This was not the first time, this was the third time that he did that.
So, is the answer to the question, you do not wish to move forward?
So, Madam Mayor, I feel strongly about my censure, because this should not happen anywhere, and by me letting it go does not mean that it should perpetuate. The Commissioner sells the narrative that I am a bully, and that I do all of these things to bully staff and to bully the commission. That is not true, and that narrative has to stop.
Commissioner.
So, I have not gotten on Nextdoor to talk about the Vice Mayor. I have not gone into private groups on social media to talk about the Vice Mayor, never have and never will, but one thing I will not tolerate is people making racial comments about me. It has happened many times before, not just with Commissioner Villalobos, but it has happened before where...
Commissioner Bolton, we're at the point, I ask a simple question, and you're going off.
Where other elected officials called me names in front of all of you, and nobody said anything, and staff is here...
Commissioner Bolton, we're done, we're not going down that road.
Because you know it's true.
Commissioner Bolton, actually, you know what?
Do you recall?
Commissioner Bolton, we're not going down that road, because, remember, there were witnesses, and that will be what will come out if this proceeds.
There were witnesses.
But the point is, Commissioner, Commissioner, please listen to the point of what I'm asking. Right? Please listen to the point of what I'm asking.
The point, I'm repeating what I think that you are asking me, and then I will answer your question. You are asking me if I want to continue my censure or I want to just let this go. The narrative is, I do not want to just say I'm letting it go, because I do not want Commissioner Villalobos to think, to think that it is okay to make racial remarks against another Commissioner. It's not the first time he's done it.
We've got that part, you said this part.
And I want to make it clear on the record.
You've made it clear, you've made it clear on the record, but what I wanna make clear is, there is, you know, two different versions of two different things going on right now. The purpose being, we have just heard from approximately 20, maybe 30 of our residents, and probably another 10 who did not wish to speak further about it tonight, what we have hopefully heard from our residents is this behavior, whether it happened or didn't happen, cannot continue. So, in the effort to hear our residents, I am asking that we put this aside, we can then go back, and we can ask for our policies to be strengthened, the city, if there's consensus on that, but moving it forward. And there was a reason why as well, that we had asked for the social media policy that nobody gave us support for. So, if we would have gotten that second to that motion, maybe some of the criticism or the concerns that you're having about people posting things would have been able to be met with some penalty, but unfortunately, this commission did not pass that item, and therefore, there shall be no penalty. So, I will go back to my request. Can we remove the censure items from the table? We can then discuss whether or not we wanna have direction to enact a more aggressive approach or consequence to our behaviors, and if that is no, then we don't go on that one either, but I'm asking for both. We've got from Commissioner Villalobos, he's heard the population, moving forward, we're going to behave, not saying that we haven't, but whatever, we're gonna move forward positively. Commissioner Bolton, can you say that? Would you please say that?
Um, Mayor, my motion is to take action and/or to censure.
So, we don't have motions during others, so the item is, basically, you are asking upon, you are asking for consensus of this commission to move the discussion regarding censure to the next meeting. Is that what you're saying?
Um, Madam Mayor, what I'm saying is that at some point, Commissioner Villalobos will have to man up to what he said and the pain that he has put me through. I will say this on the record, that as I relent tonight for this item, this item, this item, Madam Mayor, if is not heard in these chambers, will be heard in the community, it will be heard by the Ethics Commission, and it will be heard by the Board of Realtors. Mark my words, because these...
Okay, no more threats, Commissioner Bolton, no threats, no threats are needed. We are trying to move our commission forward in a positive light. We have heard our residents, have we not?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
And I heard the 50 of them that I invited here tonight.
Commissioner, please...
Had I had, had I have more than 24 hours, it would have been 200 people.
Commissioner, this is not a popularity contest. I am, can we have an answer to the question? Are you not, you do not wish to remove this item, is what you are saying? Is that what I hear?
I remove the item, but Commissioner Villalobos has to recognize that the statements that he made were not just, and my community is hurt by it, I am hurt by it, I've spoken to him about it privately, this is a private discussion that happened, and he made it public.
Thank you.
He made it public.
Gentlemen, Commission, items C and, um, C and E are off the table, sorry, C and F are off the table. Thank you very much. I will now go to E, discussion and direction by the commission body to enact a more aggressive approach consequence other than censuring. Commissioner Villalobos, will you please provide additional expectations for this item?
Michelle, I have my plate on.
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was on this one. All right, Commissioner Placo, before we go to...
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, I would like to think that I get along with all my colleagues. I understand that things are personal, and they shouldn't be. We sit up here to do the business of the city, so, gentlemen, I get it, y'all don't get along, you don't have to. Don't talk to each other, don't have anything to do with each other, you sit at opposite ends of the dais, your offices are virtually at opposite ends of the office, but when something like this happens, it is so disheartening to sit here and listen to residents, because it went outside of the office, it showed up in print. I hate, 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 hate airing our dirty laundry in public. I have said that many times, and I don't sit up here and scream, holler, and yell. I take it behind the scenes when I have something to say, because we don't need to air our dirty laundry in public. I really do not like that at all. Gentlemen, I respect both of you, you've both been elected to your position by your constituents, they choose who they want in these seats. If it happens again, maybe HR would be a better solution rather than doing this. Okay, it was just a suggestion. You know, hash it out at some point, I just, I just do not want to see us go through this again tonight with our residents. It was, I think, one of the smartest, and one of the saddest thing I heard tonight was a young lady say, "I'm younger than you all, and I don't behave that way." I mean, seriously, I say this to all my colleagues with respect, but we don't, some of us don't get along, it's okay, it's all right, we don't have to, so just keep away from each other. Let's, please, gentlemen, gentlemen. Thank you both.
Thank you. So, now we go back to item E.
In consideration of, I won't say a truce, but out of respect to one another, out of professionalism, out of respect to our staff and our residents, you know, putting those two items as censuring is, none of us want it, right? None of us wanna be put on paper, on the newspaper, that we are, we have been censured by the commission, we have been removed from the dais because we can't behave, but it cannot continue. It's been a very long year in past years, and we need to enact something that if it does happen again, that we are gonna get support from four Commissioners, including the Mayor, the action will be taken. Otherwise, if we do not say that we, not supporting this item is saying that we don't care, it'll happen again, and who cares? And if Vice Mayor Gallin is okay when people talk about his family, when Mayor is okay talking about her family, when Commissioner Placo is okay talking about their family, when we bring certain things up, we need to take action.
Point of information, City Attorney, the Commissioner is speaking...
You're not recognized by the mayor.
The Commissioner is speaking.
You're not recognized by the mayor.
The...
Commissioner Bolton, you have not yet been recognized. You say point of information, and you let us proceed, that is the whole reason we are having issues. So, please, you're asking for a point of information, is that correct, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Okay, please ask, and we will have the City Attorney respond.
Context is not provided beforehand. Context is provided after a motion, is placed on the table, and it has been properly seconded. We do not have a motion for this item, it has not been properly seconded. We cannot have discussion on this item without a motion and a second. Please advise.
Actually, Commissioner Bolton, this is, this is, this I will handle. This is not a motion, this is our discussion workshop. This is Commissioner Villalobos's item that he is presenting, asking for the commission for whether or not there will be consensus to ask city staff to present a more stringent code of conduct for us to review at a future meeting and for discussion. This is not a motion item, this is a discussion item. So, Commissioner Villalobos...
If I may, my understanding of the item on the agenda is that if there is consensus, then staff will begin the process of canvassing other jurisdictions in Broward, and if necessary, outside of the county, to see how other jurisdictions address and deal with disciplinary matters amongst the Board or the commission. And then we would bring back that report to you and seek additional direction, if you wish for us, to then process amending the code to modify the current language that essentially states the penalties or the enforcement mechanisms available to the commission for commission members violating the rules of conduct is suspension, removal, or censure, not necessarily in that order.
And that was my conclusion.
And actually, the removal is by the governor and is not by this commission. It's removal from the meeting, but not removal from office, just for clarification, please. Commissioner Villalobos, please proceed.
That was my conclusion.
Okay, thank you. So, Commissioner Villalobos is seeking consensus on the dais for determination on whether or not we should be strengthening our code of conduct, which is already in our charter and in our ordinances, and an item that has been up twice before. So, Vice Mayor Gallin, do you support this item coming back after the city's team reviews and calls other cities and sees for best practices that could possibly be incorporated into our city for us to review at a future meeting and discuss then?
Point of information, Madam Mayor, this is a discussion item.
This is a discussion item, and I'm asking for consensus.
Right, you're asking for somebody's opinion, you're not asking for discussion. So, I want to have discussion on this before you ask people their opinion.
Well, lately, when we've been having...
That's what it's called, a discussion item.
I understand, but lately, when people have been giving consensus or not, they've been giving their discussion items, that's why.
You've heard me.
So, Commissioner Gallin.
Am I being recognized to speak?
Yes, you are, please.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Gallin.
So, in response to Commissioner Villalobos, when you're a public official, you, your family's exposed to the public as well, and so, if you don't want your family to be talked about, then you should not be a public official. Whether you're President Bill Clinton, Barack Obama, George Bush, even though it's not right, it's subject to attack. I experienced it personally after being on national news, but the way I conduct myself, people can say whatever they want about me, if you're not in my family, if you're not in my circle of friends or circle of trust, it doesn't matter what people say about me. And then regarding these items, what I don't like about your approach to things is you start the trouble.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, please.
And when, when the, when the response comes back to you and you don't like it, then you bring it back on the dais and make it look like you're the victim.
Vice Mayor, we're trying to move things forward in a positive light, can you please do that?
I have time, I have the floor. So, you admit on record that you called Commissioner Bolton a name, he responded to you, and you didn't like the response, and now you come to this. Months ago, we were back there after the commission meeting was over with, and you called me a name in front of the HR Director, in front of the Fire Chief, in front of the police officer, in front of the former city manager, and I responded, you didn't like my response, and you came and brought it to the public. Conversations, personal discussions that happen outside the dais don't need to be brought to the public. You and Commissioner Bolton used to be friends, now you're not friends, but you brought a personal beef out into the public, and it doesn't belong there. That was an immature move. You have an issue, resolve the issue behind the scenes. The conversation happened behind the scenes.
Vice Mayor Gallin, the topic is whether or not we are going to shore up our...
We have a strong enough code of ethics.
So, this is where the topic is, not anything else further.
We have a strong enough code of ethics.
So, your answer is, you do not wish for us to shore up anything further on our code of conduct?
My answer is, everyone needs to behave responsibly.
That's the simple answer, that's all we needed, thank you very much. Commissioner Bolton, on the topic of whether or not we are going to proceed with asking city staff to bring back a more stringent code of conduct.
Madam Mayor, we cannot regulate love, and we cannot regulate respect. I would say to every person on this dais, maybe you don't know your rights, but let me explain my rights. If I do something bad and you think that it is something bad, residents too, there are bodies that you could go to, the Commission on Ethics, the Office of Inspector General, and those bodies are to your, you can go to those bodies at any time. So, to here, should we have staff shore up different ways to punish or reel in Commissioners? This is not the city's responsibility, it is not. If I think that Commissioner Gallin does something wrong, did something wrong, it is my prerogative to write an ethics complaint or go to the Office of Inspector General. If residents think that I have done something unethical, sure, by all means, be my guest. So, this, this item is nothing but a fluff, and we know it, and the City Attorney knows it as well. We are wasting time.
So, in other words, you are not for shoring up and proceeding forward and for having consensus to move this item forward? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, again, it is a discussion item.
It's really not, we don't have...
I, you just said it is, it is items up for discussion, I'm discussing the...
Not for details, it's for whether or not there...
Who says with details or not?
Because the thing is, none of these items had the proper backup that they should have had to be provided and put on the dais. We have a form that we were supposed to fill out with proper information and put on the dais, yet we did not do that. So, despite that...
Point of information, City Attorney, if I have an item to bring to the City Commission, do I have to bring backup information, or do I just need to meet the requisite requirement to put it on the agenda by Tuesday noon and have 15 minutes to discuss my item? Yes or no?
How many minutes to discuss?
Yes, if there's any backup, then obviously the, you know, we...
And my commentary would be backup, correct?
Yes, so...
City Attorney.
Thank you so much.
Hold on, if I may, I, you know, the Commissioner Bolton does have the floor in, you know, he has his five minutes to speak on the issue, and then, but to the point I think that everyone is making here is, there isn't a consensus to move the item forward and direct staff to do what I said before we would do if there was consensus.
And we also have rules against filibuster. So, at this time, there is no consensus, actually, sorry, Commissioner Placo, you did not speak. My apologies, go ahead.
I just think it's counterproductive. We need to behave like adults. I just think, you know, we've gotten some agreement here today, now to push this, it's counterproductive. Let's all just behave like adults.
What happens if we don't?
So...
That's my thing, that's my item.
Understood, and Commissioner Villalobos, so, we do not have consensus to ask the city staff to research and bring forth this item for further discussion for a more stringent... for further discussion for a more stringent code of conduct. Um, and I have said this before, unfortunately, at several other meetings. A piece of paper doesn't make us behave. We have to behave. So what happens is the rules were changed by this commission to broaden them. So any single person who sees another person on this dais not behaving in the manner in which we are supposed to behave. And actually, for the fun of it, I'm just gonna read the primary part of it. All right? Because it's right in here. We are supposed to behave with, oh goodness, I'm. Do you have 12 easily? The one I looked at on your stuff was different. Anyway, it's 12. It's basically, we're supposed to be holding ourselves accountable. We're supposed to hold ourselves in a manner in which our public is happy. We are raised to a higher level. We are not supposed to be demeaning or derogatory or disparaging to one another. We are supposed to be here for the public, positive, to positive influence for our public and do our job and do it well. So, um, anybody at any time, if somebody is not behaving in a manner that subscribes to our code of conduct, then somebody can call a motion to have that person on a warning and then the commission can determine if we do anything further. And it will be our jobs, all of our jobs, to behave well, keep personal items and attacks out of our comments on the dais and just deal with the matter at hand. And so therefore, we don't have to have these conversations again. So with this topic is now over, we are now going to, um, 10G. City commission questions, direction to the city manager or city attorney requested by Commissioner Bolton. Commissioner Bolton?
Uh, city attorney, have you had an opportunity to, uh, review your emails? Um, to see that I did send you communication about, uh, the comment section on YouTube, uh, being closed and it's not supposed to be closed?
Um, I have not been able to locate it, but I will continue to look and I will ask, um, uh, specifically my IT department as well as the city's ID, IT department to make that specific search. Uh, if it originated, uh, from your, um, work, uh, or, uh, uh, commission, uh, email, which I presume it did, then it should be on the city server and we'll, um, uh, I will, um, make an appointment at your convenience to sit down with you and go over it, um, uh, at, at your, as I said, at your convenience.
Okay. Um, if, what would you say to a commissioner that has information, for instance, about, um, another commissioner making a deal um, with a business owner in the city, um, about a piece of land, um, that the city, that, that the business owner, uh, owns? Um, that would be quid pro quo, quid pro quo. Um, how would we address that?
Um, if, if there's a, um, um, based on what you described, uh, you're suggesting that there would be a personal gain to a particular commissioner, uh, on an item that is, um, related to city business and the appropriate thing would be to, um, um, contact the Florida Commission on Ethics to see whether or not it is, um, any such conduct violates any of the rules and pursue it through that. The Commission on Ethics is the, um, agency under Florida law um, that has jurisdiction over, um, conflicts of interest and, and code of ethics violations, uh, uh, under chapter 112. So if there's information to that effect, uh, again, please, uh, we can make arrangements to have a, a call with the Commission on Ethics to seek their guidance and, uh, ultimately they are the ones who, um, um, make an investigation to determine whether or not there's probable cause to move forward and there's a whole process at the state level for those types of allegations.
Got it. Thank you so much.
It is 9:57. Ladies and gentlemen, surprisingly, we're out of here before 11:30. Go home. Good night. Thank you.
I have my, my mic lit up.
It's adjourned.
I had a question for the city attorney.
Meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.